Okay. Thank you, we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to the February meeting of the Russell City Council. Our chaplain, Don Erwin, was supposed to do our invocation. I don't see, but Alderman Phil Sims has offered to do it. If you would, please rise and join us in the invocation and then pledge to the flag.
Let's vow as we pray together. Most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we acknowledge you as our God and our Creator, and we just ask you to look over us this evening as we conduct the business of this city. We pray that you would be with each individual here and our families. We pray that you would continue your blessings upon our city and our county. Father, we ask a special blessing upon those men and women that serve, that put themselves in harm's way for our behalf. We pray that you would continually put a hedge of protection around our firemen and our police officers, and that you would remember their families too, as they're separated from them so often on long shifts. And Father, we just again acknowledge you, we acknowledge your Son, and we thank you for his grace and his mercy. We ask you to forgive us when we fall short of his perfect example. These things we ask in the name of your Son Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the freedom of our liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, and be seated, please. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Westcott?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Here.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Here.
And Mr. Sims?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Counsel, in your package, you should have minutes from January 19th, from a special called meeting January 24th, and from a special called meeting January 31st. We can then approve them en masse, or we can do them one at a time, or...
May the most approve all of them.
Okay. We've got a motion for Mr. Wiley, and the second was Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Finance report, there's a mistake on your page. Mr. McCoy is off today, so we're going to be treated to a report from Ms. Connie Holstein.
Thank you. General fund revenues for January were $971,740. That was 6.27 percent below year-to-date projections. Sales tax receipts were $741,433. Franchise fees and permits were $108,508. General fund expenditures were $1,301,463. That was 25.53 percent above year-to-date projections. $329,723 year-to-date less received than expended. Street fund revenues were $175,088. That was 8.20 percent above year-to-date projections. Sales tax receipts were $189,240. New one-half cent sales tax was $50,655. Street fund expenditures were $547,525, 9.235 percent below year-to-date projections. That included Arkansas Study and O Street. Sales tax improvements were $115,393. Capital expenditures were $252,154 for Cedar Street. Economic development revenues were $52,955. $41,106 for the new sales tax. $6,473 for the land lease. $4,005,44 for interest. Expenditures were $5,0598 for a comprehensive plan. Capital asset revenues were $690,873. $427,349 for the new sales tax. $258,980 for grants. $4,005,44 for interest. Expenditures were $1,301,376 for Citicorp Aquatics Center, Fire Station, and the Airport.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Holstein? Are y'all going to let her off light because we just passed Valentine?
We're going to let her off light.
Thank you, Connie. Her name will come up again later in the meeting, so... Well, that'll bring us to the Mayor's Report, and you all know how shy and introverted I am, so I'm going to try to keep it as short as I can. First order of business is a little housekeeping matter. This year's class of leadership, Russville, is here tonight, or most of them. I'd like to invite all of you to stand and let us recognize you. We had a great visit today. They came to City Hall and talked to department heads, and we appreciate your interest in the city and efforts to move it forward, so thank you all for coming tonight. So, then I have a... We have an appointment for the Planning Commission. We need to fill the vacancy created when Doug Skelton had to get off because of the new state law. I'd like to place in nomination the name of Frank Russenberger tonight. A lot of you know him. He's retired from Arkansas Highway Department. He was an engineer and most recently did full city terms for... On the City Court Board, including chair of that, I think, two years ago.
Good man.
So, he's a good guy, and I nominate him for that position.
Motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Russenberger, for being willing to serve. That will bring us to our annual State of the City address. I pared it down as much as I could, trying to get it as short as I could make it, but there's an awful lot of good stuff going on, and bear with me. In the year that has passed since our last address, operations of city departments have been typical and, for the most part, as planned, with a few notable highlights. Revenues for the year just ended were approximately 1 percent above projections made during the budgeting process at the end of 2015. Expenses were slightly below projections. As always, that is good news. However, in our case, that should be tempered with a bit of caution. The explanation for how expenses ended below budget to the extent that they did has a lot to do with positions that are budgeted for police officers that are chronically unfilled. At this time, there are currently six such unfilled positions. That means six officers that are not on the street, serving and protecting the public that we are obligated to serve. And so, we work diligently to end that part, and at one point, it's going to affect our year-end numbers. During 2016, the Russell Police Department continued to provide exceptional services to the community through crime prevention, criminal investigation, and traffic enforcement. However, this year emphasis was placed in several community events and projects that focused on community relations, partnerships, and department professionalism. During the past year, there's been much discussion across the nation on law enforcement practices and its relationship with the community they serve. As part of that national discussion, the Russville Police Department participated in several community-led forums where topics included police use of force, bias-based policing, recruitment of minorities, as well as other questions and concerns over legal matters. These forums were held at the New Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Event, and Arkansas Tech University. The outcome of these forums were positive, leading to open lines of communication with community stakeholders and opening doors for future dialogue when other community concerns arise. The Police Department successfully completed the accreditation process to become the fourth department in the state of Arkansas, to become an accredited agency through the Arkansas Association of Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Agency Accreditation Program. This accomplishment was the culmination of almost two years of work to meet the 188 standards set forth by the Governing Accreditation Committee. This process caused the department to evaluate current policies, procedures, training practices, and other high-risk, critical tasks in order to ensure that our current operations reflect the best practices of law enforcement operations. By achieving accreditation status, the Russell Police Department has enhanced and validated the professionalism that is demonstrated on a daily basis by the members of the department. The Police Department assisted in providing safety and security for the 46 special events, which included races, rallies, festivals, with the largest being the Russ Vegas Half Marathon. These events are, at times, taxing on current department resources, but it demonstrates the department's willingness to accommodate such events in order to promote a higher quality of life for the citizens of Russville. While we're discussing the public safety realm, we should take note that the Russell Fire Department had an extremely busy year and productive year. The department responded to 2,250 calls for service and conducted 23,000 hours of training in fire operations. Fire prevention, emergency medical service, technical rescue, and hazardous materials response. The department received new leadership and is now under the direction of Fire Chief Kirk Sloan. Construction was started on the new central fire station mid-year under direction of Van Horn Construction Incorporated. Station is expected to be completed in late 2017, early 2018. I like the late 2017 part. Fire Department created a new motto, "Exceptional Service," and applies it daily with every interaction with the community. At the animal shelter, 321 animals were adopted out. The staff answered 1,248 complaints and responded to 343 after-hours calls. Several off-site adoption events were attended this year in support of these adoption efforts. City Attorney's Office had its usual busy year, as did District Court, where there were 28,000-plus dispositions. An event that was noteworthy at District Court was the retirement of longtime Court Clerk Judy Duval, and we all once again wish her and husband, retired Pope County Sheriff Aaron Duval, nothing but the happiest in their enjoyment of their retirement. The operation and oversight of Russell's Oakland Cemetery falls under the daily activities in the City Attorney's Office. Stephanie Warwick and Joey Smolinski of Attorney Trey Smith's staff take care of the day-to-day duties of the cemetery and are proud to advise that in the past year, the addition of a columbarium and additional grounds were added to Oakland Cemetery, and historical records were transferred to a cloud-based system to better serve our clients and family members. The city's in-house IT department assisted in the migration to this new operating platform for the cemetery in addition to an already very busy year. 2016 started with the department still managing to clean up and recover from a failure of our email and our calendar server that occurred in late December 2015. As always, a lot of time and resources were dedicated to protecting our sensitive information from threats that can and do come from all over the world. IT is currently working with Parks and Rec on systems and software that will be needed to manage the soon-to-be-opened Aquatics Center, and with the Fire Department for training rooms, security, access control, and alerting systems that will be installed in the new central fire station. At the end of the year, the department started implementing the city's migration to the Google platform for our future software use. That is expected to save the city more than $100,000 over the next five years. 2016 was the first full year that our Human Resources Department has been administered by Ms. Vanessa Vaughn with assistance from Connie Holstein. In the final analysis, we are in the people business, and it takes quality people on our end to deliver that. We currently employ 185 full-time people and three-part-time. There are eight vacancies, not counting the new positions that will be required to staff the Aquatics Center. Eighty-six percent of our employees receive health, dental, and vision insurance through our group coverage. Our group health coverage is offered through the Municipal League's Health Benefit Fund. Russville is one of only three cities in Arkansas still in their best rate class. That standing is directly affected by our claims history. In an effort to help control claims, Ms. Vaughn is currently expanding our wellness program to help our employees enjoy better health outcomes for their families and for the benefit of employment needs of the city. Parks and Recreation celebrated 50 years of service in 2016. During the year, the department completed construction and opened the Phoenix Avenue Trailhead to Bonedea Trail, implemented a turf management plan for the city's athletic fields, installed shade structures at Hickey Park, and a new pavilion at Pleasant View Park. We added Depot Park to the park system and enjoyed numerous celebrations, concerts, movie nights, and many other events at the new Depot Park Pavilion, including a celebration just last week of the Russell Cyclones 6A Football Championship. Phase one construction at Veterans Park at Bonedea is complete, and work on phase two has begun. Installation was completed of a deep well and pump system at the soccer complex that should provide plenty of water to irrigate the fields more consistently and for greatly reduced cost. In addition to a full slate of upgrades planned for 2017, as mentioned earlier, the new Russell Aquatics Center is on schedule and on budget to be delivered at the end of summer, completion of this longstanding endeavor that all of Russville should be proud to celebrate when it opens. It truly is a beautiful facility and is being well-constructed with the team of ETC engineers and Van Horn Construction. Other notable city endeavors that have made considerable progress since last year include the central fire station, on schedule and within budget. East O Street, a complete streets project that is progressing very well and should be complete, hopefully in time for the start of the fall semester at ATU. At a special called meeting last night, the City Council approved the leasing land for the convention center. More construction will be evident on that project in the next few weeks, and completion is now set certain for the end of 2018. On that project, in the next... In recent weeks, the City Council has also authorized additions and upgrades to the city-owned water wastewater system that will provide or improve service to an area of around 300 acres in the northeast portion of the city. These upgrades will support and encourage residential and commercial development in that part of the city that will allow future growth and development for future generations of Russville citizens and guests. This report does not mention the wonderfully successful year that Russell Airport has had under the direction of Airport Director Keith Fraser. That's because Mr. Fraser will have this much department report in a few minutes, but it's been a very good year, and you should all enjoy hearing that report. That is a Cliff's Notes version of what has been and is happening within your city government the past year. But no discussion of the State of the City is complete without mentioning some of the many important partners that we cooperate with. Russell Tourism had a banner year, as evidenced by year-end numbers provided by Kristi Graham, Executive Director of the Russell Tourism and Visitor Center. Final number for revenues for 2016 to the A&amp;P was $418,203. The Russ Vegas Half Marathon, Balloon Festival, fishing tournaments, and many other events sponsored by the Russell Advertising and Promotions Commission keep growing and expanding every year. 2017 promises to be another exciting year with some major fishing tournaments, including the Cabela's Collegiate Series over spring break, Bass Master Elite Series in early June, and the FLW Costa Series will be here in March. The Russ Vegas Half Marathon and Triathlon will be back bigger and better. That event generated enough participation in 2016 that the organization was able to make a donation to Arkansas Children's Hospital in the amount of $40,000, and the goal this year is $50,000. Runners from 32 states participated in the 2016 event, including one that flew into Russell Airport in his private jet to take part in our race. The Hot Air Balloon Festival will happen in May of 2017, and there are a number of softball tournaments and other events on the calendar that promise another great year for tourism. Arkansas Tech University and the city of Russville continue to enjoy a mutually beneficial relationship that enhances the quality of life in our community. ATU's focus on student success was demonstrated in May 2016, when it completed an academic year that saw the institution confer more than 2,900 degrees and other academic credentials upon its graduates. These graduates provide our businesses and industries with a qualified pool of candidates who are prepared to grow our local economy. Speaking of the local economy, Arkansas Tech University is a signified factor in the prosperity of this region. Economic development, economic impact studies have shown that approximately 1 in 5 dollars that flows through the economies of Pope, Johnson, and Yale Counties is attributable to the presence of ATU in our community. The city of Russville and Arkansas Tech are committed to ensuring the continuation of this economic impact by collaborating on a variety of initiatives, including the development of the El Paso Corridor between Russville Downtown and the Tech Campus, gaining a grant to partially fund a path that will link the university, the new Aquatics Center, and Bonedea Trails. Service projects such as Paint the River Valley and community engagement opportunities such as performances by music and theater students from Tech at the renovated Depot Park in Russville Downtown, and the ongoing East O Street project, which will make pedestrian and bicycle traffic near the Tech Campus safer. Russville School District had a great year of progress in addition to the football championship already discussed. Pope County, City Corporation, had solid positive results to report for 2016 and good prospects for 2017. The Russell Board of Realtors reported slight increases in home sales both within the city and in Pope County. New leadership was installed at the Russell Chamber of Commerce and the Alliance for Economic Development in the form of Paul Harville, one of the most established and respected chamber and economic development officials in the state. Economic development continues to be a point of major focus for many individuals and groups that are working together to bring investment and jobs to our community. There are many, many other positives that we could report on tonight, and there will always be some that we don't get to cover. As the year goes on, individual reports will be presented to this body to more fully disclose related items that add to the state of our city. But for tonight, that will be our report for this year. Thank you all for your time, and that's going to bring us to Mr. Keith Fraser for his report on the airport. Is he still here?
Ma'am, I think he went to get gas.
Ma'am, you've got the census woman here. She just came in.
Had to go fuel the helicopter.
Yeah.
In that case, I hear this young lady is here from the U.S. Census. Would you like to report? And, well, for those of you that didn't hear it, one reason that the operations are so good at the airport right now is, well, a big reason, is our relationship with Survival Flight, based at St. Mary's Hospital. Keith called early this morning to let me know how tired he was. He fueled that helicopter three times last night, basically from 9:30 last night until almost daylight, he was at the airport, and now he's on his way out there to fuel them up again. It's a drag on him. We're trying to get him some relief. Somebody besides him has to take part in that, but, you know, the FAA's goal is for your airport to be 100 percent self-sustaining. Almost nobody makes that. At this time last year, I think we were around 43 percent. Keith's report was going to be somewhere in the 70 percent range right now, and the last two months were 100 percent plus. I think last month, we were around 150. That's when 85 or 90 percent of your revenue comes from fuel sales. That's why I'm sorry he won't have his report for you tonight, but I'm glad he's at the airport. So, ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't have anything with your name. Introduce yourself and give us an update on our census ideas.
Good evening, everybody. I am Toni Pitchford, and I am your data dissemination specialist for the state of Arkansas. My job is to help make sure that the turnback dollars that Arkansas sends into the city are the correct dollars. And by doing that, what my job entails is making sure that you are able to utilize the data that comes from the Census Bureau. When you're doing your CDBG grants, when you're making out grants, when you're working on economic development, new businesses are looking to come into the area, we have data that is available for you to utilize. I'm glad to hear that the Chamber of Commerce is running as well as it is, and I have to say, coming out of Chicago politics, to hear projects that are being completed on time, on budget, just gave me a chill, because you don't hear that very often. So, yay, Russville! I wanted to make sure that you knew that I was available to you, and not only to the City Council, but I want to make sure that the city, the Chamber of Commerce, the school district, I want you to know that I am available, the churches and the organizations. If there is data that you need while you are looking to put together your information for grants, or you're just looking to put together information that will help you to make a point, please remember that I am yours, and the key word is "I am free" to the city. I don't cost you a dime. I want to make sure that you know that you have a resource with the Census Bureau. In saying that, I want to say this. You have the university here, and we all know that the 2020 decennial census is about to come upon us. They've already started the hiring process and looking at, well, we're on a freeze right now, but we'd already started the hiring process in regards to making sure that we get the necessary people involved to get the counting done accurately. And this is going to be the first time that we are actually going to try to utilize technology, which I think for us, for the universities, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that those students who are at the university, who live within the city, who come from other places, please know if they're here six months and one day, they need to be counted here, because those dollars should be coming into the city. The rule is six months and one day. So, if they're here for the semester, that is the turnback dollars that should come to the city. And we want to make sure, I want to make sure, that we get the dollars that are supposed to be within Russville, to make sure that they come into Russville. With that, I wanted to make sure that you knew that I was available to you. I am a phone call away. I don't mind jumping on a plane coming to Russville. It's okay for me. So, if you need me, please feel free to call upon me. I will leave a brochure with the mayor and for his assistant, who will always be available to give you. But for those of you that have pencils out, and I see pencils moving, I am Deborah T. Pitchford, at census.gov, D-E-B-O-R-A-H dot T dot P-I-T-C-H-F-O-R-D. I use my fingers, y'all, because I'm at an age where sometimes I forget how to spell my name, so don't worry about it. My telephone number, please feel free to call upon me, 312-498-2240. I love the fact that we have data available, and I want to make sure that everybody knows that there's data available, even for the council person sitting up here. If you need information about your district, if you're looking for information about your area, please utilize me. Let me come in and train your organizations. And for that, I thank you for allowing me the time. Your Honor?
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
She mentioned counting university students, and we're keeping an eye on that. We did a little quick math, we being Jerry. We used 8,500 students as the number. If you, if they are reporting that they live wherever they came from as opposed to here, we don't count them in our census. If we count them here, you do 8,500, and you do some other formulas, and it would equate to about $165,000 extra dollars a year in our general fund, and I think we came up around $660,000 in state turnback funds for street departments. So, as you know, our budget is, I hate to say it after what I thought, I hope, was a positive report on the State of the City, but we're still concerned about revenues for the next year. for the next year, and every little bit will help. So, we're going to keep an eye on that and get back with you when we get a little more detail for you. I believe, Madam Chairman, that brings us down to the Finance Committee. Did y'all meet any, and do you have anything to talk about? Your standard 30 or 40 items?
Yes. Which do I begin with? Do I begin with the meeting that we held before? Okay. Mayor, we met on February the 7th, and at that meeting, we had for the street fund, we had some appropriations. And if we like, we can blend those together. There were two appropriations and then two transfer funds, fund transfers. Okay, under the appropriations under the street department, we had one for $125,000, which was the city's half of a traffic study with the Arkansas State Highway for the new corridor and other travel things, traffic things for the city. We also had for community development, $4,730 for a mower, new mower, for the maintenance department, and I'd like to present those in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the chairman's motion. Are there any questions or any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Transfer funds from capital to the building fund, $100,000 was for the fire truck reserve account, and we also had a fund transfer for the park special fund for the community fireworks of $8,500. I present both of those in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the chairman's motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Is there anything? Okay. We also had the consideration of a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into these annual agreements that we have with the Boys and Girls Club as well as the Main Street of Russville. I would present those in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the chair's motion on five and six. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay.
And finally, the consideration of a reimbursement for the Arkansas Valley Alliance statement, which is part of an invoice for their agreement that we already have in place with them, and that amount is for $4,414.80.
Counsel, you heard the chair's motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
And tonight, we met again before the regular council meeting, and the first item of business was the update of the rollover funds, and the rollover funds worksheet is on the page, next page of your of your agenda tonight. The balance in that fund after these reimbursements and spendings of things is $152,667.35. And that's just discussion, so I don't have to ask for a motion on that, right?
Correct, but thanks for the thanks for that update.
Second is the consideration of a resolution to adopt the Russville Aquatic 2017 budget. And Mr. Hollis is here tonight. If there's any discussion on that, we discussed it, we passed it, and so it's just a consideration of a resolution. So, that comes in the form of a motion.
Okay, counsel, you heard the chair's motion. This is for a resolution approving the 2017 budget for the Aquatic Center. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, Madam Chair.
The next one, two, three, four, five items are appropriations. The first one is from the Capital Aquatic Center Fund to fund the Aquatic Center to purchase equipment for $78,465.53. Number four on your page is from the Capital Department to purchase the three patrol automobile, the police cars, police vehicles, $133,685. Number five, six, and seven are to is to are to approach to get them ready for the streets. I drew a blank. These are also taken out of different no insurance, no vehicle insurance fund, that is for the surveillance cameras and a radar trailer, $6,000 bucks, and Criminal Justice Fund account. We would need $23,534.55 for the watch guard videos for the three patrol cars. And next is an appropriation for the administration's sales tax for a spending to for a bill to fix the repair and maintenance for the heat and air at the depot, $4,761, and I present those in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the chair's motion. Is there any discussion on those items? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, Madam.
Next is a consideration for a discussion or resolution to the amendment of the meeting from what we had last night on the landing of the landing, the masterpiece agreement, master development agreement, contract, and ground lease. And behind that is, no, that's it, consideration of a discussion resolution for the amendment of the landing. Present that in the form of a motion, or do is there any? Do you handle it from there?
Counsel, you heard the chair's motion. Is there any discussion on item eight? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Boy, it's going fast. Last item on my list, consideration of a resolution to authorize the mayor and the and the city clerk treasurer to negotiate a price to purchase property on South Knoxville Avenue contingent on the selling of city property on North El Paso.
Okay, counsel, I think all of you heard the discussion earlier, and you heard the chair's motion, but if there's any discussion, we didn't entertain it at this time?
You were going to ask Freddie to go with you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Since she's sitting on our wall, and I think she should be there.
That was headed, that was.
And I know a lot about repairing old buildings.
Mayor, I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
Is this contingent, will the council come back and approve the final price?
Yeah, we're just going to try to get down to.
So, we're not bound to at this point?
No, not, no.
We're just authorizing the two of you to go negotiate.
That was, this was really the only way we could figure out to get it somewhat formalized, but but at the end of the day, you guys have to approve it, but.
So, there's no binding obligation at this point?
No, that's correct, and we'll make that clear in our discussion with them that that what we're looking for is something we can bring back for your approval. But we need we is we need to figure out a way to move it forward because I think the property we're looking at, I think we're getting down to a price now that it's something you really should consider, but we won't we won't know that price until we do this step. Yes, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries, Madam Chair.
That concludes, that concludes all of the discussions we've had in the last month.
You're done with us? In that case, let's see, I believe we made the chair Mr. Wiley, didn't we?
No.
Who did we put in charge of that?
Phil Sims.
Mr. Sims. Chairman Sims, do you have anything to report tonight?
We got a couple of things.
Thank you.
First is appointment of Mr. Wiley as a temporary temporarily to fill the vacancy that's vacant from Ward One, Position One, and so he's agreed to serve that capacity until the election occurs.
Okay. He's going to play offense and defense.
He's going to play offense and defense.
He's got big shoulders.
Actually, we just wanted him on the committee so we could keep it on. And do we need a motion for that? Since it's a special appointment.
It's a committee thing, so do you?
Yeah. I would put that in the form of a motion.
All right. Counsel, you heard Mr. Sims' motion. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Wiley, you're stuck.
No.
Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Wiley. And next we have, and by the way, we did meet on February the 7th following the financial committee's meeting. The next item of business was Public Works is has an operations worker three position, and basically they're transferring a young man that's currently in one position to another position, and I've moved for that for that to move forward.
Okay. Counsel, you heard the chair's motion. Any discussion or questions? Does does that mean that they're going to hire someone to replace him and that worker one position?
Actually, this is just to move him from that position into the worker three position at this point.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Chair, that motion carries.
And that would complete what we discussed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business carried over, so that will bring us to new business item one, consideration of a resolution to issue a special use permit to re-erect a billboard, electronic display. I would entertain a motion to put that into discussion. Motion.
Second.
We got a motion, Mr. Westcott, and a second for Mr. Wiley. This was unanimously approved for recommendation to the by the planning commission to the council. We got any discussion?
Is there anybody here that that knows about that, that can answer questions?
Would you step to the microphone and give us your name for the record, please?
Wesley Hackett. I'm with Lamar Advertising.
Do you have questions for him, Mr.?
Yeah, how big is this billboard going to be?
We're actually going to reduce the size of the from what is currently there down to 10 six by 36, 10 foot tall, about 36 foot wide.
So, is it great, it's going to be visible from the interstate?
Yes, sir. The current location is by Russville Steel. There's currently a billboard there.
Yeah.
We're just proposing to take that one down and erect a new billboard in its place.
What colors are you gonna, is it going to be? Not going to be no blue on it, is there?
No, sir.
Okay. I was concerned about that blue color.
No, the pole will be brown.
Okay.
They discussed in the finance meeting that there was, there would be the ability to connect with Amber Alerts and different things that so that you could alert people as they were.
Yes, sir, that is, that is one one thing that we do.
Anybody else have any questions? You okay? In that case, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Motion here and a second there. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New business two, consideration of an ordinance declaring the purpose, intent, and findings on the solicitation in the roadways. Is this a new ordinance?
Yeah, it's a new ordinance.
Changing what we did the other day or just adjusted?
Adjusted.
What kind of motion do you?
Well, we need to suspend the rules, read by title only, and I can explain it, the change, which is.
That's your motion?
A new move to suspend the rules and read one time by title only with a very short explanation.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Take six votes for passage. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Smith?
An ordinance declaring the purpose, intent, and findings of the solicitation of the roadways of the city of Russville, Arkansas, defining solicitation, prohibiting the solicitation of the roadways of the city, prescribing a penalty, repealing ordinance number 2184 for other purposes, this ordinance have passed would change the prohibition of the solicitation to a well-defined, objective standard. When speaking with the police department, they felt as though the roadways were kind of hard to, they were hard to enforce based upon the differences in some roadways in the city, so this was changed to 15 feet prohibition zone from the actual visible roadway, paved road, and the ordinance was changed to make that reflection. So, that was the only change that was made, was to conform to that.
Any discussion on that?
So, I have a question about this.
Before you ask your question, can you ask questions before we make the motion?
That's, yeah.
You have to make.
You have to adopt it first.
Motion to adopt.
You have to make the motion to adopt and then.
Motion to adopt.
A second.
Second, Mr. George.
Yes.
Okay.
Now you got.
Now discussion.
Okay. How are we, I saw that there were fines, that there were things attributed to this as far as in from the punishment aspect. I'm assuming that this is to help curtail things like panhandling.
Yeah.
One of my friends is the director of the Rust Bus. Our our patrol officers, do they, I know that some of them work well, I know some of the patrol officers work with the Rust Bus in helping getting people help who need actual help. I understand there are panhandlers who are just out there to try to make money, but there are people who actually need help. How is something like this going to affect them? We don't want to place fines on people who are literally seeking help. Sorry, are they going to be able to make that a decision?
The.
That's correct for the chief.
Let's hear from Mr. Smith.
The the ordinance is to prohibit any type of solicitation near the roadways for safety purposes for not only the solicitor, other pedestrians, and the vehicles that travel by the road so that there's no distraction. However, it it prohibits any type of solicitation within that zone based on the need for traffic safety. So, there's, the ordinance has to be applied equally to all that that attempt to solicit in that zone.
I I understand that. I just want to make sure that that we, as a city, are not just doing this so that we can push people who actually need help out of the way. And I knew that, yeah.
One of the reasons why I promoted the ordinance that we voted on in December and then this update or amended version right here is certainly not to limit one's ability to solicit help.
Yes.
In no way, shape, or form is that my intention. My goal, on the other hand, is to curtail the contact of pedestrians with traffic.
Right.
For instance, if one wants to solicit donations there at the intersection by Harps, between Harps and and Western Sizzlin, as they do, they stand right there in the grass. My goal is to move them further off the curb. They're still quite visible from traffic, and if one chooses to make that little corner and turn into Harps parking lot and roll down their window and give them funds, fabulous.
Yes.
But let's not do that right in traffic.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that, especially for our police, to maybe suggest that they contact the Rust Bus as well instead of, yeah, instead of just giving them a fine for standing in the street, so.
Well, can I ask a question?
We wish you would, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I just had this happen today on the corner of Skyline and Main Street. How will they get the money if someone is in their lane and they're over here? They have to come out into the roadway to get the money. I saw that today.
Good question.
There, if someone wants to give them money from their car, they're going to have to pull off the road. That person cannot go into the road because that creates more of a safety hazard than them going into the roadway.
I saw it today.
I understand that, and if the police see them, then a citation could be written because.
To whom, the driver of the car or the person?
They could do both, but preferably it's the person because they're the one generating the act of soliciting.
Is there going to be something in there for warning the first time or second time? Is there gonna be something in there for warning the first time or second time?
It's gonna be...
Is that gonna be up to the police officer?
That's police officer discretion.
Chief, how are you gonna handle this?
He'll sleep on it.
Well, ask me. Ask me a specific question. Is it, is there gonna be a, a first-time warning?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be, it'll be officer discretion.
Okay, cool.
And most times, officer discretion is we advise someone of what the law says or the ordinance says. We give them information, tell them, don't do this. If we have to come back, you're subject to get a citation. That's normally how we handles, handle these types of things that are nonviolent.
Yes.
Not a true crime in progress. And, uh, usually these people will go on somewhere else.
So how much would the fine be if you fined them?
Right, it's...
Right.
It can be up to a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
However, the court's going to sentence, is gonna make a, the court will set it a standard fine, but it can be anywhere from a dollar to a thousand. There's a range.
That's why I wanted to know, 'cause I, yeah, well, I...
Most, most of the time, most people will back off the road there if they're given a warning by police.
I just wanted to make sure that, that it was up to police, the police officer's discretion, uh, especially in an initial thing like that, because if they're seriously needing help, they may, or if they're from some other town, they may not know where to go to get help. And if a police officer can direct them in a first-time situation like that, that's, I'm fine with it.
Mayor, may I ask a couple of questions?
Well, there's a number of providers in town for people that need assistance.
Yeah.
Chief, when you encounter somebody, I mean, your guys usually can tell who really needs help. Isn't that pretty common?
If you're willing to spend a couple of minutes with an individual, you can find out what their intents are, if they're just doing it for a living or if they actually need help. And those people that actually need help are not ashamed at all to ask for help.
Yeah.
And we defer or refer them to these, like the Rust Bus and others, for help, and they're usually, uh, we even give them a ride. I mean, we'll give them a ride if they need one, so...
Mr. Tripp, you wanted to ask a couple?
Yeah, not necessarily the chief, but just part of it, Mr. Smith. Does the, uh, ordinance passed in December have the same fine associated with it?
Yes.
Or is this a change? It's, okay.
It's the same. It, the only change was back from right-ofways to roadways and the change within section six where it went back from right-ofways to the road, fifteen feet of the roadways. And it took out one A, which was, uh, had some, had language about a person entering the roadway to get the solicitation. I struck that entirely and i- if someone wants to give a solicitation, then they could pull off the road at their nearest place with the solicitor to give them the money. It just seemed as though if you let somebody go into the roadway, it's more of a traffic safety issue than them soliciting on the side of the road. It just creates a bigger problem.
Okay, second question. I think I only have three. Second question, uh, I'm gonna draw a correlation to the issue we had at the Christmas parade, uh, about people soliciting in the crowds and so forth. Does this only pertain to traffic in the roadway, uh, to where, for example, um, if a group wanted to pass out something, hand out something in the crowd along the parade route, this would or would not pertain?
It's one pertaining because a parade is, traffic is blocked off.
So it only pertains to the traffic that's in the street?
This is only when there's active traffic, your normal day-to-day traffic. If you have a parade, then it's not going to, I mean, by that definition, you're having no traffic.
Or you can do something on the city sidewalk as long as it doesn't pertain to the traffic in the street?
That's correct, too.
Okay.
Mr. Tripp, we're gonna bring something back fo- forward later on about that.
Okay, all right. And next, uh, last, for example, um, the people that, uh, last few weeks, few months have demonstrated or, or held signs down at the courthouse, uh, on a weekend. How does this pertain to that?
Well, that's exercise of free speech. They're not soliciting into things, so...
Okay.
Again, that's...
So the setback with the fifteen feet and stuff does not apply to that?
They're not soliciting somebody for money. They're using free speech.
Okay.
And there, we couldn't regulate that.
Okay, I just wanted to, I didn't wanna say mine.
Okay.
Trey, I have one question. On page three, three of five, section six.
Yeah.
Paragraph C.
Getting there, yeah.
You make reference to the state statute of solici- or...
Right.
Okay, so for the purposes of this, are we going to enforce the city ordinance definition of the fifteen feet versus what the state statute says about if there's a sidewalk or if there's not a sidewalk and...
I, I think if there's a conflict between what you see in the five sixty-seven, one oh seven, uh, then the state law will apply. It has to give way. So, but if there, if there's no conflict between the two, then the city...
So that's, that's one of the problems that we have, like on highway sixty-four.
Yeah.
Is you have a sidewalk adjacent to the roadway. And if I'm not mistaken, the state statute says you can be on the sidewalk. But if there's a sidewalk and then there's a, a grassy area and then there's the highway, you can't be between the sidewalk and the curb.
Right.
It's... So are we gonna go by our ordinance on this or are we gonna go by on that state statute?
We have to go by the state law if there's a conflict between the two. If the state, I, I don't remember one oh seven that clearly, but I think if it allows, if it specifically allows that, then we have to now. In the past, my recollection has been is when there have been people near the, on sixty-four, that they were too close to the roadway, that they can be cited in violation of, uh, I've known that's been done in the past. So I can get in touch with the highway and transportation people and see.
We're going back to, uh, Mr. George's concern about discretion and all of your concerns, I'm sure. I wanna know absolutely how this is going to work with the state statute on state highways before we go out and do our first enforcement.
Okay.
Since this is a new ordinance.
Right.
That defines the fifteen feet.
I can talk to them and see if there's any issues on that, but I, let me just double check.
If there's not, then this, I prefer the language in this much better. I mean, it's clearly defined.
It's clear, yeah.
Let me finalize that, but it can be enforced with all the city roads.
Yep, right.
But let me double check.
But most of our, most of our solicitation is on a state or US highway.
I know.
Most of it.
Most of it.
With that being, if we're waiting on something, do we need to table this, amend that motion to table it? If Mr. Smith needs to clarify that, or do we go forward and then come back and change it again?
Go forward.
Well, if you put it into effect, without an emergency clause, there's thirty days before it's effective. If you wanna do that, and then during the meantime, I can see if there's any, needs to be any type of change.
That's good.
Okay.
I have a question about, this came up earlier in another one of our special meetings. I can't remember which one, but the strictness of city ordinance versus state law, would this be considered stricter? And if so, is that not allowed?
On, here you, it's not, it's not a stricter issue, it's more of a preempt. Whether the state law preempts the ability of the city. And when it comes to city roads, there's kind of a fine line of what a city can do versus what it can't interfere with what a state highway or state street has. You can set the speed limits on the state highway within the city, but you, there's a certain amount of regulation that you cannot do when it comes to traffic flow. So, but that's only for the state roads.
Yes.
Well, and, you know, this kind, it kinda relates...
We'll make a change on that.
For example, when you have pedestrians crossing, like at the neighborhood market and recently, I was in front of Branca's Steakhouse and two people crossed in front of me and were almost hit by a vehicle. We were traveling east and they were almost taken out by a vehicle. A vehicle had to brake to keep from hitting two pedestrians that were crossing over to La Huerta's or somewhere there in that range. So are they, they're not supposed to be on the highway there, are they?
No.
No.
It's jaywalking.
And that's a state highway, so, I mean, I would just, I would just curious on how that would...
It's a different thing.
Yeah, it's a different...
Because you're, you're looking at the city, police would've had the authority to stop them there. So if they're on the sidewalk doing something against the city ordinance, now right, walking up and down the sidewalk, we're not talking about. Of course, that goes, I see bicycles on sidewalks, that's technically not allowed. They're supposed to be in the right-ofway. But that's not important unless you get hit by one and you're walking, or unless you hit one and they're in a crosswalk and you're driving a car. So all those things impact the driver. That's kinda what this is talking about, is impacting the drivers. Guy steps off the curb to try to get the money from the car and someone else hits him. Because they entered the turnabout and they don't see him, I mean, they're, they're gonna be liable. So it create, it creates a lot of, I mean, it's just trying to clean up, in my opinion, some, some potential liability for drivers and things.
So can we go ahead and approve this tonight or vote on this tonight? Give it the thirty days and give the city attorney a chance to find out exactly how this highway department rule applies to what we're doing?
I think if nothing, I mean, if it doesn't, if this, if the ordinance doesn't apply, then the state law will apply only to the state roads. So you'll have a ten-foot zone. It'll apply everywhere else.
Okay.
I'm okay to vote on it. Your clarification is more for PD's use.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right.
Well, let's see the vote on your table.
We've got a motion to adopt and a second by Mr. George.
Yes.
So we'll need to deal with that first. Is there any other discussion? Any questions?
Can you repeat that about, the part about Mr. George, a motion, a second, is that right?
Yeah, a motion, Mr. Westcott, second.
Mr. George, so you wanna call the roll man first?
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion adjourned.
Wait a minute.
Oh, you're not ready.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna even do the emergency clause?
No.
All right, that, okay, that is the end of the, uh, agenda, but, uh, I would be remiss, since Mr. Frazier is not here, if I didn't remind everybody.
Yes, do.
From eleven to two tomorrow, he's hosting a little open house out at the airport again. And this time, he's cooking twenty pounds of ribs.
Speaking of which...
Mayor.
Hammer it down?
Mayor.
Oh, for crying out loud.
Mayor.
I thought I was going home and have lunch.
Mayor, also remind the council that, that we're having a meeting at each one of these departments on a Thursday before the council meeting?
Yeah. Uh, last Thursday, we had a reception out there at the, or it's Keith hosted a reception at the airport out there. And I thought it went pretty well. It gives you a different perspective. Mr. Wiley and Mr. Sims were there and, you know, we knew it would take a little getting used to. But we're gonna do that every month. Whatever department is hosting or is responsible for, department had to report that month, we'll host a reception for all of you to come out and, and, um, you know, I know how, how hard it is sometimes to get out on-site and...
It was very educational and we appreciate you opening up the facilities to us. That was great.
It was nice.
He came back to give his report. You know that, don't you?
I, you know...
He must have not.
Yeah.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you. Cliff's Notes version, quick. You got time? You gonna do it?
Yeah, come on.
We ain't doing it again next week. We're not calling a special meeting, so...
Make it quick.
It's a, it's a good report, though, I assume, so I hope it didn't contradict all the lies I told about you earlier.
I, I appreciate that. I hope you don't perjure yourself in any kind of way. Um, I, I hate it that I had to run out, but I'm a one-man show today, more or less, so, uh, taking care of business, you know. But, um, two thousand sixteen was a great year. We saw an increased volume in traffic, um, not only the helicopter, but we saw a lot of corporate traffic that we hadn't seen in the past. And, um, as a result, the jet fuel cells have been excellent, been great. Uh, some of the highlights, uh, we began the construction of the parallel taxiway that y'all approved last year. Uh, was completed on February second. Uh, hopefully, we'll get the final documents, uh, we'll get the final documents in next month to the state and get on the agenda for April to get our money back off of that. That was a ninety-ten matching grant, cost neutral to the city. So, uh, we've done a lot of things out there with our federal matching money and we're gonna continue to, uh, pursue those projects as, uh, in accordance with our, uh, capital improvement plan. Uh, fuel cells, dramatic increase, especially the last quarter of two thousand sixteen. Um, our fuel cells at the end of two six, or two thousand sixteen was one thou, or one hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-two gallons year-to-date, which was a fifty-eight point nine-five percent increase for the same period of two thousand fifteen. Excuse me, a little bit out of breath. Uh, self-sufficiency, this is the number that I look at every month. At the end of two thousand sixteen, self-sufficiency was at seventy-one point oh four percent, compared to fifty-eight point three-six percent in twenty thousand, or in, in two thousand fifteen. What that means is a savings of over thirty-one thousand dollars that we didn't have to spend out of budget. So we're gonna do our best to continue that trend and our goal is to be a hundred percent self-sufficient. And, uh, it's gonna take us a while to get there, I'm not gonna kid you about it, but we're, we're gonna get there. Uh, hanger occupancy was at seventy-two percent, but we are seeing an increased demand for enclosed hangars. Right now, I've got, right at six airplanes under my open hangars that would move into an enclosed hangar if we had them. I've got the opportunity to bring two jets to the field, uh, if we had hangar space. I've got a helicopter that is probably gonna be coming to the field, about ninety percent sure that it's coming. Uh, I've got some hangar space for them for now. Um, but eventually, they're gonna wanna set up a base of operations and I've, I've talked to them about some possible locations on that, on some airport property, uh, most notably the land across the street from the army, which we'll never use. So if I can get a helicopter base there, uh, that's gonna be some revenue-producing property for us. Uh, the airport commission and myself, our first meeting, uh, for this year, um, we stressed landside development, ma- basically, um, the, the need to develop hangar space. So at our ma- meeting next month, we're gonna get a little bit more in-depth, start putting some numbers together. And then we'll start looking for funding sources for those hangars. The, it, it's, it's good to have these kinds of growing pains. It shows that our economy, at least for Russellville, is turning around. Uh, the two jets, if we bring those to the field, plus the helicopter, we're probably gonna be looking at another thirty-five to forty percent increase in our, our jet fuel cells. So we're gonna go from eight to nine thousand a month to probably twelve to thirteen. So, you know, it is, it's, it's a good problem to have... So, you know, it's, it's, it's a good problem to have. I just hope that we're, we can address it this year and get the, the aircraft here. Of course, we made a lot of aesthetic improvements to the airport, most notably painting the old terminal building and the gazebo, which y'all helped fund. And the gazebo has a, a unique feature. I'm not going to tell you about it. You'll just have to come out and find out for yourself what it is. But it's pretty cool. Happened accidentally. We didn't design it in there. I promise you, I'm not that smart. We did some major, we've been doing some major ground upkeeping projects, mainly clearing ditches, making areas more easy to mow and upkeep. But in, in the same vein, just makes the place great to look. That's one of the biggest comments, comments I get of how nice the airport looks. And we're going to, we're going to keep improving on that. We are still actively recruiting to try to get more businesses to locate on the airport. We're looking at the possibility of trying to attract an avionics installation repair facility along with the helicopter-based business. Right now, with the avionics, we've got planes going, you know, Hot Springs, Mena, Pine Bluff, Federal Fort Smith. That I think if we could put together a attractive enough package to attract an avionics business here, we'll start pulling planes in from other places. So just, just kind of some of the things that are in the pipeline. Also, I've got one of my customers based on the field that has talked to me about wanting to develop our area south of the runway to, for, to make a hayfield out of it at his expense. I told him that I didn't have a problem with that. We've kind of worked out some details and I'll be visiting with Trey about that. But if we do that, that's going to be areas that we don't have to bush hog. It's going to, it's going to look great. So all that being said, you know, two thousand sixteen was, was a great year. And two thousand seventeen is looking to, to, you know, follow along with it. You know, one thing, when we start doing our comparisons, always keep this in mind, when we get to, you know, July or August of this year, we won't see those fifty and sixty percentile increases in our fuel cells. They'll start plateauing a little bit. I hope they don't flatline. I hope we're, we're still, we're still seeing that increase. I'd like, I'd like to see our, you know, when we get to July and August, I'm going to be looking, you know, hopefully to see, you know, twenty, twenty, thirty percent increase of what we've done this year. I think Russellville's on the, on the right track as, as a city. And that bears out by the, by the amount of corporate traffic that we're seeing Monday through Friday. Monday through Friday, ninety percent of the planes we have coming in and out are, are people coming here to do business. It may not be big corporations, but there are people that are doing business in this area. So, you know, I can't do what I do without y'all's help and I appreciate it. Any questions?
Did you sleep any last night?
About an hour.
You going to get enough sleep tonight to be able to have the ribs ready tomorrow?
If thirty minutes ago was any indication, probably not. But I, ribs, ribs, ribs will start getting prepared about five o'clock, so. So I may have to work that in between helicopter flights, but I can do it.
How many acres is a hayfield?
The hayfield will be actually, probably about eighty acres. It's that area just south. So, anything else?
No.
Sorry to hold you guys over, but I appreciate y'all staying.
Thanks for the report.
You bet.
Mr. Wiley?
Motion adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight.